All right, we'll get the second half of our time to vote forum underway. There's the four candidates for city council. Same rules apply. They have two minutes of opening statement each. That will go into questions. Some of the same questions that we had before, some new ones for the councillor, candidates, and then we'll close again with a closing statement. So we'll do this in alphabetical order and we're gonna have some, a couple of lines today this time, so we'll see how this works. But we'll start with Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate being here and it was an honor and a privilege to serve you as your councillor over the last four years. I also like to thank Dave, Jimmy, and Peter for coming forward. Anybody who comes forward for public office needs to be commended and I'd like to thank them for that and being here this evening. Four years ago, ladies and gentlemen, I took office in 2012 as reported by the city manager, the city was facing financial bankruptcy. I came to the table, as I always have for the last four years, bringing detailed solutions to our problems. First two years, I offered up major reductions in the budgetary process while not cutting services. And I see, I see the fruits of our labor have come forth to fruition over these last budget cycle. We've recently, managers report this surplus in our budget due to good negotiations which were carried out by sitting down with the unions and working out a solution to their problems and also to stop the bleeding at a cogeneration plant that faced the city with numerous deficits over the years. So it was very important that we looked at that because I think the financial stability of the city enabled the ball market, the city to bring jobs in is to have a city that's not facing financial bankruptcy. And to try to bring the tax burden down to individuals so people will come and invest here. I've had friends of mine that I've contacted, great businesses in the community, and they're very reluctant at the time to bring businesses into their community that was facing financial problems. So now we've got the city in facing in a better direction. I think we're gonna be able to go out this next term, when I'm re-elected next term, to really concentrate on job growth, bringing jobs into community, making sure, as I have over the last four years, to bring accountability to city government and to try to bring the tax structure down a little bit so people can afford to fix up their homes, raise their families, invest in downtown, invest in numerous areas in our community. That's very important. And as always, I support the seniors in the area. I brought money back into the budget this past year to make sure that our seniors have the funding that's applicable to their programs and to make sure that they can afford their homes and keep the investment in their homes. So thank you.
P. Martin. Hi, everybody. Can you hear me? Good evening and thank you for being here. Thank you to Ignite for hosting this. Thank you to the Hilton Garden Inn. And most of all, thank you to Robert Harding. I wanna stand in front of you, Robert. Seven generations ago, my family, my family has lived and worked in Auburn, New York for seven generations. I wanna see the city prosper. I believe my experience has adequately prepared me for a job as a city councillor at City Hall. For the past five years, I've served on the Auburn in Large City School District Board of Education. I'm a professor of mathematics and computer science at Kiowa Community College. And over the years, I've been involved in many civic organizations and I've served on many non-for-profit boards. My husband, Lee, and I live in the city and we have one child who attends Auburn High School. His name is Mathias. The other day, I was just saying that I got into running for, for office because my son, Mathias, was at Casey Park School and we had an experience there that compelled me to run for Auburn City Council. And then last week, we went to college night. So the time does fly, living here in Auburn, New York. So I wanna see Auburn be a place where our children can live and prosper. I want our grandchildren to be here to live and prosper. I wanna contribute to a council that can move our city forward through economic development and not by hindering it. I want to look forward to a civil discussion in council and I believe that governance can provide that civic, civil discussion, civil discussion. And so I look forward to serving you around the city council. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Ignite for organizing the debate, Robert for moderating, and the beautiful Hilton Garden Inn for hosting us here tonight. As you know, my name is Jimmy Genetino and I am a candidate for city council. I was born and raised in Auburn and at the age of seventeen, I decided to serve our country and listened to the United States Air Force. I was stationed throughout the country and while I enjoyed each duty assignment, new opportunities offered, and new friends made, at the end of my enlistment, I decided it was time to return home. I returned home with my wife, Toni. We returned to Auburn to raise our family. That was our goal. Upon returning to Auburn, I was fortunate enough to start a career with a locally owned, family-run company, Madden Community Computer. Eighteen years later, I now manage a department of twenty-five coworkers. I took advantage of the DI bill. I finished my education. I received a master's degree in American history from Sumi Oswego. In 2008, I was fortunate enough to get the opportunity to teach American history at Columbia College in Syracuse. Toni is currently the CFO at Kiowa Senate Community Action Agency. We have both volunteered our time on numerous boards and community organizations. We've been homeowners in the city for the last eighteen years, twice purchased new homes here. Our children, Andrew and Gracie, are being educated in Auburn schools and are dedicated members of local sports teams. As you can see, as a family, we are all in. I'm a first-time candidate for political office and I've chosen now to run because I believe our city is at a crossroads. After decades of stagnation, I believe that we are sitting in the midst of a cultural renaissance and at the brink of rediscovery. In order to maximize our potential and seize this opportunity, we require elected officials who are well-rounded and open to new ideas. We deserve elected officials that conduct city business in a respectful manner and are ready to lead by example. We must have elected officials who have personal agendas and will make well-informed decisions for the rural and rural mind, what is best for Auburn. I believe that my combined experience as a veteran, an educator, a manager in private business, a parent and property owner, makes me a well-rounded candidate and can bring new leadership to city council. Thank you.
Okay, I'm P. Mazika. I'm a current city incumbent councillor. And again, no offense to what councillor Camaro said, but we got to the city when we took first to office, we were $4.3 million in deficit. The city was very, very deep in financial distress. What we did in two years is turned that around to a surplus of, for the first time in six years, of $317,000, which wasn't a insignificant challenge, was not an insignificant challenge. We moved the city's finances over $4.6 million in two years while keeping the property tax cap at point and a half percent for both years. So we achieved an affordable growth in our tax level as well as fiscal soundness and responsibility. We steered the ship in the right direction. Now, I'm a professional, I'm a mechanical design engineer and I might portray as proud selling and understanding solutions. What we did is took our skill sets and combined them. We looked for solutions, we looked for sound solutions, financially sound solutions, that led to this turnaround of the city. Now, we, one of the decisions we made was to lift the sales tag on gasoline. Now, because of market conditions and how they, are highly competitive, the pricing change for the consumers wasn't there. So by adding this, that provided the sales tax spike that we've seen continue to this year and led to a surplus because this was the first year that we had that cap lifted. And this is the results. That was what led to our positive sales tax growth this year. So we made the right decisions. We have fiscal responsibility. Myself and councillor Camaro are, are the candidate. We are the team that you need. Thank you.
Move on to the question phase and if I could ask the council candidates just to stay seated for the questions, that would be appreciated. Start with you, councillor Mazika. The question for all of you is what, what do you see as the single largest challenge facing Auburn and how can that problem be ratified?
By far, the single largest challenge facing this city is jobs. We need a balance of jobs, not just hospitality and service, but we need the other higher-paying jobs so that those hospitality and service jobs can be supported. The city cannot be all hospitality and service. It needs a balance of industry and it needs a balance of professional jobs. We need to encourage the growth of these professional jobs so that the quality of life issues that we wanna progress, such as the arts, which is also supported by mostly discretionary income of those people that have the incomes that can afford this. Right now, we have a city population that's twenty percent is in poverty. That's unacceptable. We need to turn that around. And how do we turn it around? We need to encourage development in industries and good-paying positions that will support the population. We need growth in individual incomes. Obviously, we can't guarantee anybody a job. What we need to do is make ourselves the best marketable place for a job. That will solve a lot of issues, not only for the heroin, but parents will be able to stay home more, not have to work three or four jobs. They'll be much more engaged with their children and they'll be able to offer their children much more as far as advantages, schools, sports, and all the types of things that go along with the extra incomes. This is what's needed to rebuild this community. That is the root cause of all the problems we have in the city is the lack of jobs. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, when we come to this question, there's a lot of things that we need to look at. Number one, the city's on $100 million in debt. We have a large indebtedness on the backs of the taxpayers right now. We also have to look at, we have a severe drug problem in the community. We need education. We need police officers on the street to stop what's going on out there right now. Innocent lives who are losing left and right, that's gotta stop. We need better investment in the community. We're worried about our population rates are not dwindling. That's due to the high tax structure. I wanna bring that tax structure down so people are not afraid to invest in the city. So we keep institutions like the college going because without a population base, we don't have enrollment at the college, an economic driver in the community. It's fantastic. We need to encourage investment in the community so we can support the hospital that supports people to have drug addiction. So we have a lot of factors, but we gotta come to the table with sound solutions, work together, as I've done over the last four years with my fellow councillors, in a professional way. We need to identify these problems. We need to work them out. There's serious problems that are facing the issue. We've gotta stop raising the taxes to our members of the community and see how we're gonna lower that tax burden so we can have investment, we can bring revenue to the table, we can bring revenue to our community that's much needed, and also look at the expenditure side also, that we control the expenses, but have investment in the city that's very important to support all the things we're talking about, quality of life, services to the taxpayers, services that they expect and deserve. So all these situations need to be looked at. It's very hard to identify one issue. There's many issues that we're facing as we move forward as a community. Thank you.
You know, to identify one problem, and I know it's necessary to ask that question, but I think all the issues that face us are interrelated and they feed off of each other, so it's difficult to pick one problem. But I think I would pick job creation retention. You know, as I mentioned, I moved back here eighteen years ago. I was very fortunate to find a good-paying job with a very reputable company that's been around for a long time and I'm thankful for that. But job creation retention is important. I think it has a ripple effect on everything else. It affects quality of life. Obviously, it spans the tax base. Hopefully, it slows down the brain drain that we talk about so often, keeping our young people here because they have so much to contribute to our community. We have witnessed success in downtown redevelopment. Often, I hear that we should refocus our energies away from downtown and I disagree with that. I think we should take the successful approach that we've seen downtown and focus it on job creation. And I think if we did that, we'd see the same type of success. And I, you know, I do agree that we do need more high-paying jobs, career-oriented jobs, but you know, hospitality and service jobs are important too. I think they give people who are unemployed a sense of purpose, something to get up for every day, to go to work, and they do serve a purpose in our community. Thank you.
Hi. Before I answer the question, I just wanna say, when I came back to Auburn and was a young school teacher in the summers, I waited tables at the Springside Inn and I bartended and I worked at the Pioneer Restaurant and I made a boatload of money. So I disagree that service jobs cannot provide for our community. And any job that we do is, any good job that we do, if we work hard, it's, it's important. I think, I have to agree with my, the people who spoke before I did. Job creation is very important in quality of life. We want our young people to have the ability to come back. We wanna attract our young families here. And quality of life can attract our empty nesters back. In the last two years, my backyard neighbors are people who retired back home. They moved back to central New York and they're thriving, they're thriving. And through the Auburn Players, which I'm a part of, there is a couple that's joined the Auburn Players and they've decided, they didn't come from here, but they decided to retire back here in Auburn. So that is also something that can improve our world, not only job creation, but creating a quality of life that attracts retirees back, that attracts young families, and then attracts commuters. Let's not forget that we are right in between Syracuse and Rochester and there are plenty of families that wanna live in a great town with great schools and commute to Rochester or commute to Syracuse. So there are lots of ways for job creation, quality of life, to increase our taxpayer base, to get our families to come back here. Quality of life, education, arts, nightlife, the development of natural green space, those are all things that are considered good quality of life and that can attract people here. So our worst job is, our hardest job is job creation, but I think we're on the right path for quality of life.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanna make sure it was perfectly clear that we're stating this, that all jobs count across the board, whether it's industry, manufacturing, what it is. It's very important that we look at, any job created is a good job for the community. So I wanna make sure we touch upon that. But I also wanna touch, talk about to support the renaissance that's going through downtown and through the community, we need to get a cap on taxes, bring the tax level down a little bit, stop with the fees and all the extraordinary price tag that's involved with raising the taxes all the time so people have a more discretionary income in their pocket so they can go and support the arts and buy theater tickets and support the businesses downtown. This is very important and I think this all goes hand in hand. But every job is a job for the community. It's gonna have the ripple effect which will bring better quality of life, it'll add to the tax base, it'll add to the sales tax tax base. So everything is important across the board. Thank you.
I'd like to, either one. One way to reduce the tax burden is to have more people share in the tax burden. It isn't always, let's just cut taxes and fees at all costs, but if more people move to our area, we have a reason for people to come in, to live in the city and pay taxes here, then we have, we have reduced the tax base. We also are competing with our neighboring communities, again, for lifestyle. If we can bring people here to live, then we share the tax burden.
It's definitely very important that jobs, regardless of the jobs created. Again, I fully agree that there's a ripple, but we need a balance of these jobs. It can't all be service and hospitality. You're depending on, if it's all service and hospitality, you're depending on the outside world to come in and take advantage of it. So I think a lot of that needs to be homegrown. We need jobs and decent jobs all through the city. We're not gonna grow a tax base and attract people right now when we see our populations declining right now because of our taxes. We've got seventeen tax challenges based on assessment in the city. Most of these are businesses. If they can't make the bottom line because the taxes are too high, that there's a problem, they're putting the jobs at risk, we've gotta fix the tax problem. Thank you.
I think what Dea was getting at, what I'm getting at, is that what's going on in downtown is important because it makes us a destination, it makes it a place where people want to come, to come visit, to come live. I'd been downtown. I was in Parkers and a busload of women came in. There was thirty women and they had come up here from Pennsylvania on a wine tour. They were gonna stay in Geneva and then they saw what was going on in Auburn and they decided to stay here. They spent their money here, they had dinner here, they had drinks here, they stayed in the hotel. That's all important revenue coming into us. It makes us an attractive place to be and if we want to grow business or attract business, I think that's an important aspect of it.
The next question deals with consolidation and merging of services. Do you think there are opportunities for the city to consolidate services with the county or any other municipalities? If so, can you name any specific services you would consider consolidating or sharing? Start, start out with this.
With me?
Yeah.
Like my cellphone. Absolutely, we should continue to consolidate our services with the county and the city. But one of the other municipalities or one of the other governing organizations that we never think about consolidating services with is the school district. The school district provides, or is a big part of our tax burden. If we're duplicating services between the city and the county, but then we're duplicating it for the school district, we could save a lot of money to remember that the school district is there. One of the things that we pay a lot of money for in our school taxes is snow removal. If there was some way to, to, to look at a joint venture just in snow removal at Auburn High School, that would be huge. Or the, the high school also, also pays for tax removal to, or excuse me, tax removal, oh, that would be great. They pay for, they pay for trash removal and so if something could be struck up with the city, that also would be great. So those are two things that I don't think anybody's really thinking about. We haven't, I am the right person certainly to, to connect us with the school district. I know what's going on there. So I think that we're on a good road also with the Joint County Economic Development Agency. We are, we are working together to, to work toward economic development. I think that we could do better. We need to share a vision and share some strategies as we move forward.
Dea mentioned Kiowa Economic Development Agency. I think that's a perfect example of how several organizations can come together and work for one common goal. And I think that we could look at their example and use that. Yes, I think we should look at opportunities between the city, county, and school district at consolidation. Some examples, the current plan for the city-county garage, I think that's a good first step. There are some plans for a joint public safety building. I think that's a second great step. And then we can look at maybe how we reduce costs of things like insurance, things of that nature. But we have to have open, honest, forthright conversations and it's something that's gonna take a lot of effort on all sides.
Not for the sake of consolidation, for to put it down and say, we did something for consolidation. But as I see consolidation, we come to the table where the county, city, and school district and we save the taxpayers money. I proposed this past year that we sit down with like department heads, we take the police chief, the sheriff, the treasurer, and the county treasurer. We sit those department heads down and we say, okay, I want you to come back to the table and tell us, how can you set out tax bills more efficiently so both municipalities save money, the school district too? How do we save money plowing roads? Both department heads sitting together finding this out. How do we save money by doing fingerprinting for the sheriff's department and the Auburn Police Department? Because eventually, we're gonna be forced to do this. It's something that we're not gonna talk about, but it's something that we're gonna have to look at as we go ahead and as we try to save money for the taxpayers. I voted against the consolidation plan because it was gonna spend, cost $100,000 to both the county and city. And nobody could tell me how much the taxpayers were gonna save. I didn't think that was in the best interest of the taxpayers and I didn't support it as I always look at what's best for the taxpayers as we move forward. So I think we need to have a group that keep these dialogues going. I've continually asked for meetings between the city and the county that we move forward. It's been very difficult with our two, with our city manager and a county manager to get them together to come forward. So it's something after the first year, we're gonna have to start having our own dialogue as public officials and get these things done and start demanding that people come to the table with cost-saving measures so we can have consolidation efforts in the city, county, school district, college, OSIs, whatever it takes to come to the table to provide better services in an efficient manner to the taxpayers and his communities. Thank you.
We definitely need to look at that very hard. Wherever we have any overlapping services, like, like performance of function, everywhere, everywhere that we have this, there's a lot of that low-hanging fruit. And what you do is you pick the low-hanging fruit first. You do the easiest ones first and you build a momentum from there. The county, city can certainly look at sharing some types of levels of public safety and patrol with the sheriff and the Auburn Police Department, that's certainly feasible. The DPW functionality can certainly do it. The snow plowing is a different challenge because of some of the equipment. The county has a different level of equipment than we do. However, there's certain areas that we can, could share that service. So there's many opportunities. We just gotta keep looking for them and we just gotta start bringing it up, let the snowball roll. Start it and get going with it. And it has to work for the taxpayers. We can't just consolidate for the sake of consolidation because what we really need to get out of the consolidation is the real true value to the taxpayer. And the real true value to the taxpayers is how much less it costs. By using the same services such as, let's say, in a county or purchasing, by sharing just purchasing departments, we can power crafts and take advantage of the greater purchasing power with both municipalities and the school districts, looking for the same types of equipment. These are low-hanging fruits. And like I said, you pick those first and once you start there, you keep whittling away at it. You're gonna find out eventually that some levels of consolidation is not feasible simply the way they do business, but you certainly will have achieved the lion's share of it and could bring the cost effectiveness and taxes under control that way. Thank you.
Shipped to this question. This question was asked during the mayoral debate just a little while ago. What would you do to help incentivize our local businesses to become more environmentally friendly? Councillor Mazika will start with you.
Certainly. Right now, we go to the plan, plans that we have curbside recycling. I mean, obviously, not every industry has, can take advantage of this, but we also should encourage green use of packaging materials. When they send their packaging materials, their products out in packaging materials, if it's easily recycled, that's a win. The other thing is about manufacturing. If you make it out of manufactured goods, out of part, particles or pieces that are easily recycled, that helps the stream all the way down. This has been the industry leaning for the number of years of design for manufacture, design for recycling. This is why everything, including your TV cases, now we have a plastics emblem on it that's plastics. It identifies what's recyclable. All the consumer goods now are being targeted to be ultimately recyclable. So this is being led by businesses and championed by businesses long before this was what we're gonna talk about here at this level. We have local businesses that use certain products, a couple plastics we manufactured, they use regrind. A lot of plastics are recycled and called regrind and used in for lower-quality products like blow molded bottles, things like this. So they are leading the edge. We may not know it, but they are, they are leading the edge on recycling because it affects their bottom line. If they can lower the material costs and their delivery, make their packaging costs less, they're gonna do it. And the way they do it is it's recyclable. Thank you.
I think when you look at this subject matter, you have to involve your state and federal officials in this also because it comes to how manufacturing can become more green in providing power to-
in providing power to their facility as we have throughout the city at a local level. As we have in the city, we have hydro plants along the outlet. I think it's important that we partner with manufacturing base. I'd like to see it eventually, the North Division Street can be partnered with the Babadere plant to provide green energy to that facility so we can provide jobs to the area and maybe it will be divided up, we have many manufacturers in that facility, but we'd be able to partner with a green facility as bringing hydropower, something that the city was built with a hundred years ago, great success of the city of Auburn was built on the hydropower in the city, green energy that we need to go back to because there's no emissions and it's very clean and economical for a private industry to go look at. But also as we talk to our state and federal officials, we gotta bring the cost of doing business down, all these regulations that you see across the board and are hampering our state to do business and be effective in the business and be a player in the marketplace out there. So as we move forward, we gotta move forward and we need to work with our state and local officials, federal officials, excuse me, and to make sure that we're building, building a relationship so that we can enhance green energy in the near future for manufacturers in the local areas. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question? Because it was more about recycling at the local level or incentivizing businesses to be more environmentally friendly and that?
What would you do to help incentivize our local businesses to become more environmentally friendly?
You know, I'm a runner. I run about twenty-five, thirty miles a week, I run the city streets. And I can say without a doubt that we do not recycle the way we should in this community. It needs to be stressed. We know that the landfill, its lifespan is about six years. If we can limit what's going into the landfill, then maybe we can extend the life expectancy of the landfill. I think that the city should lead by example. We should encourage our businesses to be better recyclers, be more friendly to the environment. I see our new bid director sitting in the front row. Maybe we could work with bid to reach out to our downtown businesses about recycling. It was one of the concerns that was actually brought up to me when I visited with the landfill. I went to the landfill over the summer and I got a million dollar tour of the landfill and I met a lot of the staff down there. And it's a concern that they have, they see what's going into the landfill and that we're not serious about limiting the stuff that can go in there. So I think we could work with our businesses and do some type of incentive, make sure that they're doing a better job recycling. You know, in terms of alternative energy, I am in favor of alternative energy, but I would be leery of us as the city governing getting involved in further alternative energies. You know, people say the city was built on hydroelectric power, that's correct, but it was private investment. It wasn't the city paying for hydroelectric power. And we know the situation we're in with the cogen and how much money that's costing. So I would be very leery of investing taxpayer dollars into that.
I think that as our community values become more green, and so will our businesses, we can create a culture of social entrepreneurship where it becomes important for businesses to be green and societally aware of what's important and then they respond in kind. So if it's important to our community and we ask our businesses outright, well, are you recycling? Maybe they will. Or maybe you say, "It's important to me that you recycle, do you recycle in this business?" And find out. So it becomes a moniker of quality and it allows businesses to prosper through doing good for, for the community. I think that, you know, Pope Francis is helping the world become more aware of why we need to be green. I think that he's a good role model. He's providing leadership and we, as Jimmy said, need to be those leaders and to, to take those steps and to make sure that that is a priority and that green businesses are welcome here and that when they recycle, they are helping our community and our world.
Next question, Jimmy, you brought up the city landfill, so we'll move on to that topic. There's been news that the city landfill is almost at capacity. What will you do to reduce the amount of waste that is sent to the landfill by the city and by residents?
Okay, so the question is, the question is that what would we do to, say that again?
What will you do to reduce the amount of waste that is sent to the landfill by the city and by residents?
Well, I think that, I think that the landfill right now, we have, we have an issue. It's, it's filling up very fast. So we have a current cell that is open that has six years of life. We are in a situation where we can, we can move forward with, with changing the way that we, we use the landfill and the way that we do curbside pickup and recycling. Or we could try to slow down the cell filling up at the landfill. So if we don't slow down what's going into the landfill, we have six years. So I think that some of the proposals that are for the city for when that cell is full should be considered. There are three, three, I guess, options. We could outsource all of our services, curbside pickup and, and the landfill, the tipping of that, those services. We could build another cell or we could build a transfer station that would, that would just take our, and keep our curbside pickup. I think I said all three of the things that need to happen. I think that the, one of those three options is the way to go. We should go ahead, look at all of those options and try to make the best option for, for what is happening in our landfill. I don't think saving space at our landfill solves the problem. I think that what happens if we save space at our landfill, we're just putting this problem onto the next council or the next generation. I think that we need to truly vet all of our options and make a decision. So that's what I think.
As I mentioned, I visited the landfill and I talked with the staff. I was at a city council meeting over the summer where Mike Tulpik came and he was basically warning, raising a warning flag saying, "Listen, we've got six years, there are these three options, we need to sit down and have some serious discussions about what we're going to do with the landfill." So I hope that starts to occur soon because six years is not a long time. Again, I talked about it in the last question, I think we need to do a better job of recycling and can watch what's going into the landfill. I know that there has been some talk about, you know, possibly limiting the amount of outside trash that comes in. Yes, that would extend the life of the landfill, but then there's a revenue discrepancy there and how do we make up for that lost revenue? So it's a tight rope that we need to walk, it's an issue that we need to sit down and have some serious conversation with them.
In regard, in regard...
In regards to landfill, ladies and gentlemen, very important issue as we move forward in that area because one of the proposals that I had, I did a very detailed presentation in front of council, we extend, extend the life of the landfill out as long as possible, extending the debt service out as long as we can so that we have an active landfill. Because what goes hand in hand with the landfills, people really need to be educated on, is the city of Auburn just made a commitment to buy the cogeneration plant for four and a half million dollars. We also have a commitment of two and a half million dollars back to the general fund because of losses at the cogeneration plant. Now, the cogeneration plant is a plant that was built many, many years ago by the city of Auburn to generate methane or convert methane from the landfill into electricity. We need as much garbage going into that landfill over a long extended period as we can so we can pay down that debt. So if we close the landfill in six years, the methane is starting to drop off after that point. How are we gonna pay for this large amount of money that we owed to such a bad project? So we have to look at how we're gonna pay for that, how we're gonna provide the service to the taxpayers of the community by not forcing them to go out and hire an outside contractor to come in and pick up your garbage. So all those things that need to be on the table. Residents of the city of Auburn paid many, many years for a landfill for the service to be picked up by curbside pickup. Nobody's told me the cost of setting up a transfer station, sending trash to Centecam Meadows. All these are unknown costs to the taxpayers of the community. We gotta make sure that we can pay off the cogeneration plant, repay the debt to the general fund, provide services to the people of this community who paid for the landfill and expects that curbside pickup and protect the jobs from the guys that pick up the garbage. Because if they're not out there picking up curbside pickup, they're gonna lose their jobs. So very important, all these things play into, we look at all these different scenarios as we move ahead and it's just not as easy as saying, "We're gonna close in a few years." We gotta make sure that we're making the right decision as long as we can to preserve the taxpayers' interest as much as we can. So thank you.
One of the largest parts of the intake of that landfill is what's called CND, or construction demolition debris. This is a very inert material, this is the rocks and the stones and the dirt, it does not change or convert or become broken down biologically into methane gas. So by limiting the amount of CND, perhaps even taking the CND and having that direct haul to an alternate landfill, such as Centecam Meadows, where we can have what's called the MSW, municipal solid waste, which is your squishy garbage. That's the stuff that goes in there, generates the methane and creates the gas that we need to sustain the landfill gas generation plant to allow it to have operation, to hopefully get that debt service paid down. Once the landfill comes, becomes full, it's definitely, it's gonna happen at some point in time. We need to look at every option. And one option that hasn't even been brought up is, is direct haul from the trucks to a different alternate landfill site such as Centecam Meadows. Rather than sitting there handling it twice with the touch labor of dumping it off and loading it back on a truck, we direct haul it with the trucks rigs directly to the Centecam Meadows and offload it. This will, this will tie up some additional trucks, but you handle it once, you don't have to sit there and stack it, move it around. So an investment in some additional equipment may help at that point in time. We need to look at every options and the only way we're ever gonna look at each one of these options, we need to start planning. And we gotta start planning now. Every option needs to be looked at and cost benefit analysis needs to be done and whatever yields the best cost benefit to the taxpayers is the direction to go. Thank you.
I believe the, I believe the three options that I stated, the transfer station, the outsourcing option, and building a new cell, those three have already been, those options have been vetted by the professionals here at the city. I do wanna say that I didn't say which I preferred, which option I preferred. The outsourcing option though, I do wanna say that I am hesitant of because one of my priorities is certainly to value our workforce and preserve the jobs that already exist. I was, as was Jimmy, we were both endorsed by the Cuba Labor Council, by the firefighters' union, and by the Auburn Police. So our city workforce is something that is very important to the both of us and so if the city workforce is going to be affected, I think that we would consider that very carefully.
When I was talking, when I was mentioning direct haul, that was with city employees. There was nothing about outsourcing that or changing it to a private hauler. This is using city employees, city equipment, and city vehicles in time to offload that stuff directly to the landfill rather than dump it into a transfer station. Again, a transportation is gonna be very expensive to me, I mean, we need to have every benefit looked at and that is an additional option, a fourth option that needs to be vetted. And I do believe we can find out of those options, one that's more cost effective than others. Thank you.
Move on to the heroin epidemic. Less than two weeks ago, Auburn emergency responders had to administer Narcan four times in 24 hours. If you're elected, how do you plan to ramp up efforts against our heroin epidemic?
This is a three-pronged approach. Part of the solution to this problem and winning this battle is the first one, the fourth part is education. We need to educate those people so they understand the risks. The next part is the treatment option. You need to expand the treatments, we need the hospitals, we need the caregivers, the mental health professionals, and those health services to help recovery. And we also need guidance for those people to recover. And the last option is availability. You need to limit the availability. The only way the city can control availability is by putting more police on the ground to enforce it. So with the three-pronged approach, that's how you win the battle. You're not gonna win it on just one point, it takes all three. Not only, like I say, again, recap, it's education, treatment, and health services, and making it unavailable. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, a very serious issue that's facing our community as we're losing these young children to terrible situation like this. I talked about it on the steps of city hall, terrible situation when you have to go home and bury a child because they've got involved in a drug, drug problem like that. I saw this firsthand when my sister Donna passed away just recently and the pain that it brought to our family and how we had to move on after losing such a beautiful girl to cancer. So I know firsthand how it is to lose such a loving individual in your family. We need to do a better job. We gotta support, putting more police officers around the street. That's gotta happen. Tried to do it this past budget season, it was turned down. We need to have more police involved in the community. We need to have better education out there so that these children are, know the side effects of what's happening once they get involved in something terrible like this. And we need more encouragement from our church groups and our civic groups throughout the community to bring education to the table, let people know how what a terrible situation we're fighting in our community. And also perhaps the most important thing is, we need to get our state and federal officials involved so we can bring funding to the table to stop this because it's gotta stop and it's gotta stop now. And we need more involvement from the state and federal government. So it's our responsibility as members of the community to reach out to our federal and state officials if we can get some funding to stop this problem and help in any which way we can. Thank you.
As a parent of a fifteen-year-old, twelve-year-old, heroin epidemic is a serious concern. I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't realize the seriousness behind this. One of the unexpected, I guess, benefits of being a parent is that your children's friends become your secondary children. Or when you coach, like I had those kids become your secondary children. So it's a great concern for all of us. It's a difficult problem, I don't think there are any easy solutions. I think it requires a multifaceted approach. First and foremost, it starts at home. It's about having honest conversations with our children. We can't shelter them from this, we need to talk to them about it, we need to let them know, you know, what the results of drug use are, not only to them, but to their families and their friends. Schools, education is probably one of the other most important things. How do we better educate our children in the schools and have teachers reinforce what we're talking to our children about at home? SROs in schools, it's a very valuable tool. I happen to be friends with several SROs. They work very hard at building relationships with children in school, being another person that they can come talk to when they're having a problem or when they're being confronted with a bad choice. We need to realize that drug addiction is a disease, is a mental health issue, we do require treatment for this. And we need to be more serious about that and what those options are. I understand, you know, the idea of adding additional police officers, that's something that, you know, it's not just a heroin issue, it's crime in general, it's something that needs to be discussed openly. How can we do it in an affordable manner? But I do not believe this is an issue that we can arrest our way out of.
And I have to say, I have to agree, this is a heartbreaking issue. To see our twenty-somethings die well before their time, it is just heartbreaking. It affects everyone in the community because we're all so connected. I do believe that education, services, and more police can help us. I have to go back to this idea that Jimmy just brought up and that's the SRO program. A few years ago, the SRO program was on. Those are our, our officers in the school. They are not just police officers in the school, they are not just there to provide security. They're there as, as, yes, to provide some security, but they are there as educators and they are there doing community policing. They are building relationships with our young people and they are becoming the support system for our system for our young people. They are, they are, they know who they are and it's somebody for them to go to if they have any questions. And as educators, they can help to make our children, or to help our children, nobody can make our children, but to help our children make better choices. And they're there to help educate families as to where to get services. So yes, more police officers, but let's make them SROs. You know, drug dealers are like feral cats. Okay? If you chase one out, there's only going to be one to fill in. The solution is not to chase out the providers. The choo, the solution is to make sure that they lose business. So what we need to do... We need to help our children and parents make better choices. Thank you.
Okay, part of the issue is, and it really all starts at home, the family element needs to be strong in order for this to have worked. People need strong parental guidance, strong parental role models. And that's what we're losing. A lot of the social issues that we're facing, poverty, lack of work, all these things are related. Parents can't stay home with their children. Things, this is a breakdown of family. Everything starts family first. That's your first educator. So we need to support and make families stronger. We need to work on that aspect. So by providing better opportunities for employment, better living conditions, we, and more support systems for, for the families, that's how we're going to help win one of the biggest educational barriers. It starts at home.
I had the opportunity to meet with Sherrod Gold and Sherrod Gold has said that we need to get the drugs off the street. We need more enforcement out there on the street, because if it's taken off the street, they don't have the opportunity to be introduced to this, to the drug and have those types of problems. So I fully support more police officers on the street to take it off the street so it's not after for consumption to these young individuals. So thank you.
Our, our drug problem is, is starting at home. It's not starting on the streets. Our children are being over prescribed. So, so education to make good choices. These are not, these are not street kids. These are middle-class kids who are being addicted because, because the drug choices that they're given, they're over prescribed for sports injuries. Um, they are taking the prescription pills that are left over in the, in the medicine cabinet. Um, but this is, this is pretty much known. It's, this particular drug epidemic is happening in, in the homes. It is not, it's not starting in the streets. So I think that educating our parents and our children to make better choices is, is really, really the way to go there. And if we can do it through our SROs, then those are the way, that's the way we should go.
Okay, well, move on to closing statements. Each candidate gets two minutes to, to close things out. And we'll start, since he was at the end of the lineup to begin, we'll start this time with Councilor Ziegler.
I feel that I make the best candidate because I am a free thinker. I'm an independent thinker. As a trained engineer, I've used data and hard facts. I don't base my decisions on politics or what is good for special interests. Merely, what that is the best solution in interest of the taxpayers. We need to have more involvement of the taxpayers and, and have city government. I would like to see the city, uh, council chambers filled with people interested in their city government. Typically, they don't pay attention to city government until it affects them, and by then it's too late. They need to be involved right out of the box. They need to understand what's going on in city government. And the only way we can do it is we've got to make it more accessible. We have problems right now. I've heard several complaints about the online video service that we have, bad sound quality, bad picture quality. All this is a part of the issues that we need to address as far as opening transparency. But again, we need to have more involvement with people at the city level. They need to show interest in their city government because that's who's representing them. And in order for them to get it there and understand the issues that's going, that are going on and have input into them before it's too late, they need to be awake and involved. Thank you.
This is Gracie in a packed room. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This is part of the democratic process. Being a history professor of American history, this makes my heart smile. Thanks for being here. Every election cycle, inevitably you receive a knock on the door by someone running for office. And they usually make the statement, "We need to bring our young people back." I agree with them, and my story has proved that with hard work and determination, that is possible. Eighteen years ago, at the conclusion of my military service, my wife Toni and I decided to make Auburn our home, the place where we would raise our family. In the time we've been back, we've been truly blessed with rewarding careers, a great home, the best family and friends anyone could ask for, and of course, two wonderful children, Andrew and Gracie. As a family, we've been fully invested in our community, and now I want to take my commitment to the next level. My decision to run for office was one that I made after much consideration and open conversation with my family. In fact, it was the support of Toni, Andrew, and Gracie that was ultimately my deciding factor. After announcing my candidacy, I hit the ground running. Over the past five months, I've made, now for the visit, many departments within the city. I've had the opportunity to meet the hardworking men and women who keep our city functioning on a daily basis. I want to thank them for that. I would like to thank the police and fire unions, along with the Cuba Labor Council and CSE for their endorsements and support. I've walked nearly every city street and knocked on thousands of doors. I've had the pleasure of meeting many new people and listening to their concerns. It has been a truly rewarding experience and I hope to earn their support as well. I will bring the same determination to city council. I will work just as diligently on the issues that are important to all of us, and together we can lead history's hometown into the future. I ask you to please take time out of your busy day on November 3rd and go and vote. It's your right, you need to exercise it, and I humbly ask you for your support. Thank you.
As I look around the room and as I traveled around the city for the last few months, I realized how, how lucky I am to know so many of you. I may know you because I was your math teacher at Auburn High School or at Cuban Community College. Maybe because you went to school with me or with my husband or with one of my sisters. I may know you because we were in an Auburn Players Play together. Or I may know you from spirits. I may know you because we worked at the Addams Foundation Piano Series or, or were in a choir together. Some of you know I, uh, some of you I know because I worked at the Scritside Inn or at the Pioneer Restaurant. And some of you have been my colleagues at Cuba Community College, at Auburn High School, and at Auburn Cable Vision's Relapse. Your children may swim on the swim team with my son or play on his soccer team, or maybe they're in Boy Scouts together. I may know you because you are an educator or a student in the Auburn School District. I know you because we are Auburnians. The community of Auburn, New York trusted me by electing me to the Auburn and Large City School District Board of Education for two terms. I'm proud of what I've accomplished there. I ask that you trust me again on November 3rd with your vote. Then when we meet again, we can say that we know each other because together, we move Auburn forward.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me this evening. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you over the last four years. I made a commitment four years ago that I would spend the city's tax, city's dollars like they're, they were my own. I never turned my back on that promise. I always came to the table with sound solutions and asked the tough questions. I asked the tough questions to protect the water fund. When the manager and his controller said there was $165,000 in the water fund, I said, "No, that's not possible." They went back and found over a million dollars in the water fund. So that we wouldn't have to raise your water rates, we wouldn't have to put additional burden on you, the taxpayers, and we're able to fix the infrastructure to provide you with safe drinking water in the community. I've always brought sound, sound solutions to the table. I've always looked out for the best interest of the taxpayers, always leaving my political endorsements at the door. And I will continue to do that over the next four years. And it was funny, my son, who was a recent graduate of Cornell University, said, "Dad, I don't understand it, why you keep talking about you don't want to raise taxes when things keep going up?" And I said, "John, that's a good question, but until I can look the taxpayer in the eye and say, 'I've done everything possible,' and we either can raise taxes or lower services," that's not, that hasn't happened yet. There's still much work to be done. Auburn's doing great. We're moving it forward. I want to continue moving forward, bringing our youth back to the community, giving better opportunities to our seniors and the people who pay taxes and deserve good services affordably and efficiently. So with your, with your support, I ask for your endorsement on November the 3rd by voting me for another term, so that we can keep the good progress that we started four years ago, moving in a right, right direction, bringing Auburn back, bringing jobs back, bringing opportunities back, and making Auburn the great city it once was and will continue to be. So thank you very much, folks, for having me this evening.
Well, we've heard from all the candidates tonight, and, uh, you know, let's, let's give them another round of applause. Thanks again to legislator Lattimore and Mayor Quill for participating earlier. John Wilcox looks like he has a few things to say.
Just a couple. I'm not going to read as much because it was a lot easier to say it. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out. We appreciate this. Voting is so important to us, young professionals. I want to thank Robert Harding, the candidates. I also want to thank, but I also want to thank you. This is not seems to be working. Voting's so important, and if we like tell our young kids how important it is, we're going to understand that even if we didn't change this time or last time, we will make a change. Um, Ignite really focuses on that because we think it's important. And young professionals, we don't want that brain drain going anywhere. And if we make this place a place to live, it's very important for people to want to stay. I want to make a few announcements really quick. Coming up events, we, the Auburn bid is putting on the Thanksgiving Parade, November 28th from 3:00 to 6:00. They will have, the Jacy Mall will be filled with kids activities from 3:00 to 6:00 P.M. and then the parade will be following after. Also, look out for our Ignite Christmas Party. It's going to be in early December. We'll send out an email for you to know where that is. All right? Uh, we also want to say Ignite the winner will be held on the first Friday of March. That'll be March 4th, 2016. It'll be lots of fun. It seems they'll only be getting better, and we do have the chili competition, just in case anyone's hungry. Last but not least, election day is Tuesday, November 3rd. Mark your calendars, people. Make sure you set time to vote. It's so important. You have to say, "You can Ignite the vote." Also, Ignite has a survey for everyone to fill out. You've picked one up probably at the beginning with your program. If you haven't filled one out, please fill one out. It's important to us to hear your feedback. Um, surveys are anonymous, so if you're interested in getting involved at Ignite, please write your contact information on the survey. Um, and last but not least, once again, I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight. Don't forget about voting on November 3rd. You can Ignite the vote.